I'd like to call the September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, in the sixty-five history of the city of Crest Hill, we've lost two city of Crest Hill police officers. So every time this year, every time this year, we celebrate, we remember them in our prayers and our thoughts. Our first officer was Officer James W. Nink, who was slain on September sixteenth, nineteen sixty-seven. And Sergeant Timothy Simonson, September twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four. Officer Nink was in pursuit of a robbery suspect on a gravel dirt road, veered off and struck a telephone pole and was impaled and was killed instantly during that traffic accident. Sergeant Simonson was doing an investigation on armed robbery that happened two blocks from the site, opened up the trunk, and the offender was in the trunk with a shotgun and shot him point blank. So we certainly want to thank them for their service and their commitment to the city of Crest Hill. We will never forget them. We certainly want to offer our condolences to the Nink family and to the Simonsons family on their loss. Their children are now all adults, children of their own, so keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Also, September eleventh, just a few days ago, three thousand people were killed in that tragedy and many more after the fact, firemen, policemen, people that never made it home. You go to work, you think that you're going to go home every night, and all those people twenty-four years ago, never made it home. Keep all of them and their families in your thoughts and your prayers if you pray also. We also lost one of our governors, Jim Edgar, passed away a couple of days ago. I had the opportunity to meet him once. He was a very good man, was a good governor, so we want to offer our condolences to the Edgar family on their loss and try to get them through this most difficult time of their life. And finally, to the family of Charlie Kirk for that senseless murder that happened. And in my mind, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat, in my mind, the thing that's the saddest is that wife will never have a husband again, and those two beautiful children will never have the ability to know their father. They'll have to read about him. That was the saddest thing that I watched for the last two weeks. So let's keep all of the Kirk members in our thoughts and our prayers today, that those children who were at that scene will not have many repercussions from it mentally or physically, and hopefully they can turn out to be productive citizens and families of their own one day. So keep them in your prayers. Keep everybody that I've spoken about here in your prayers, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for everybody that was mentioned. Roll call, please, Preston.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Hello.
I'm here.
Scott Dyke?
Here.
Angelo Disario?
Here.
Darrell Jefferson?
Here.
Claudia Giselle?
Here.
Tina Oberlin?
President.
Mark Sapity?
Here.
Nate Albert?
Here.
Joe Kubo?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I would ask for council's concurrence that we go to the agenda item number eleven. First, the proclamation for Constitution Week. We do have two individuals from the Daughters of the American Revolution in the audience tonight. They've been here for many years. We've done this proclamation for many years. We'll begin with the reading of the proclamation with the aldermen and women of Ward Three and Florham. We'll begin with Alderperson Oberlin.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities and...
Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in him as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as Constitution Week.
And urge all of our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And witness herof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this fifteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-five. Raymond Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I'd like to invite Pat Decker and Donna Demick to the podium with me. We've been doing this for several years. Thank you for your always being here. Thank you for everything that you do to promote the Constitution to the younger children along with the schoolteachers and everything else. Thank you for the commitment that you made to the Daughters of the American Revolution and for the service and dedication that you show every year by being here. And this is a very, this is the most important document that we've ever had, so we have to make sure that we keep it. And so I would like to, on behalf of myself, the city council, all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, present you with a copy of this proclamation for this year of two thousand twenty-five and next year for the two-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary of the United States.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And microphone, podium, and all yours, ladies.
Okay.
Hello?
Is it on? To Mayor Solomon and members of the Board of Crest Hill, thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight to receive the proclam, your proclamation to promote Constitution Week from September seventeenth to twenty-third in the city of Crest Hill. I'm also a member, a resident of Crest Hill. I am Pat Decker, the Julia, Louis Joliet Chapter DAR, and this is Donna Demick, and she is also a resident of Crest Hill, and we are both from the Louis Joliet Chapter. The purpose and mission of the Daughters of the American Revolution is to perpetuate the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence in seventeen-seventy-six. To that end, we promote education of the Constitution in our schools, libraries, and city halls. As Abraham Lincoln said at the end of the Civil War, "Our safety, our liberty depends on preserving the Constitution of the United States as our fathers made it inviolate." The people of the United States are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow men who pervert the Constitution. Again, thank you for having us here tonight.
Can we get a picture?
Sure.
Just talking.
How about we go up there and we get the whole picture?
Yes. That would work.
Ladies, I want to thank you for your, every year you do this, and I know what kind of
work goes into these volunteer organizations, so I applaud you for doing this and coming here every year. And Pat, well, he lives across the street from me, so I see you all the time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Glenn.
Okay, moving back to number one on the agenda. It is the financial report of May, June, and July, two thousand twenty-five. Information is in your packet. It is for informational purposes only unless anybody has any questions of Glenn or Jamie. Hearing none, we will move on to agenda item number two, the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on September second, two thousand twenty-five. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Disario, for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of September second, two thousand twenty-five. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
You also have before you for approval the minutes of the work session held on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alderman Disario, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Questions or comments?
I just have a quick comment. Click, rush, eh? Can you change something on the public comments area? I forgot to call today. I was supposed to call and I forgot. The part that says Stuart Sophia, the statement is not correct. What he meant was he asked if one percent grocery tax and who will be collecting the two percent canvas tax. But if you want, I can like send it to you, the whole statement?
We'll look back to the tape and then if it's correct, we'll get a change.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, to the motion, seconder. Agree?
That's fine.
Okay, roll call, please.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No agenda items for me tonight, but happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions of city attorney?
Yeah, I need, do I call your office? I need to know about something, how much we've been paying so far. Do I need to call the firm to ask?
For what?
Do I need to call your, the firm, or do I need to send an email about certain questions? How much something has been costing us or how much we paid up to date?
You can send an email to me.
I can send an email to you? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Blaine Wing. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor. Just have a few updates. I'm going to send council, I just received from IML, some parking information. So everybody who's attending, if you didn't receive an email that, for this upcoming conference, there's information regarding parking, where to park, an app, and some other information. So I'll be forwarding that along to, to our elected officials. I know, I think the treasurer and maybe the clerk also, no, not attending, okay. But I'll pass it along to all the elected officials so that you have information for our IML conference that is starting this Thursday. Next, I did hear back in regards to the photos. We did have a conflict, so I'm going to move it to the next meeting, which would be the October twentieth meeting, unless somebody emails me that they have a conflict. This would be photos for all the elected officials that we'd be taking, most likely off in the corner over here with the professional photographer. That was a follow-up to my Friday update. I originally tried for October sixth, but there was a conflict with one of you, so I want to capture everybody if we can. I'll set up a sign-up sheet, so about every ten minutes, we'll be able to take photos from about five o'clock till seven o'clock if there's not a conflict on that date, again, October twentieth. And then finally, prior to this evening's meeting, I did send council a status update in regards to a matter that might be of interest to some council members. I'm hoping to have that topic concluded by the end of this month, so talking with Attorney Stiff, I'll be able to then provide a report or a comment and some information. But I did send an email about six-thirty this evening, just as there's been, I'm sure, some curiosity, and I was able to talk with Attorney Stiff today, so I wanted to provide council with an update.
My internet was down.
Sure.
I did not get that email. I don't know if it'll be up when I return.
Sure.
Because my son is in charge of repairing the situation, so perhaps...
Before you leave, I'd be happy to print off a copy.
And the parking thing as well, because we have nothing.
I have a copy here that I can give you of that one, and then the other one I'd be happy to print off.
Thank you.
It'll just take me a moment.
In regard to the email, eventually you will tell us who started all this, who initiated all this, because I'm being blamed that I initiated that.
Oh, I'm, I'm the one that started it, so...
Okay, so it was Claudia Giselle, right? Oh, for the record, thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Blaine.
Thank you.
Moving on, Public Works Department, we do not have any agenda items tomorrow. If you have any questions, you can contact Julius tomorrow morning. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items here. First, I'm looking for a motion to approve a resolution, approve an agreement for the Caton Farm Water Main Extension buying between the city of Crest Hill, Illinois, Will County... I'm sorry, city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and MJ Underground, Inc., for the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for a resolution approving a construction agreement for Caton Farm Road Water Main Extensions buying between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and MJ Underground Incorporated LTD for an amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-three-four-five.
The next item I have in the agenda is to award a contract to DMI Mechanical Industries, Inc., DMI for short, for a chemical feed system upgrade at Wells four, eight, nine, eleven, and twelve, in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sapity, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, to award a contract to DOM Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the chemical feed system upgrades on Wells four, eight, nine, eleven, and twelve, in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Yes, what's that dollar amount again?
Five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item is again a motion to approve a resolution approving a construction agreement for the inner circle phase one water main and roadway rehabilitation buying between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and MJ Underground for an amount of two million three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, six-hundred-and-eighty, and sixty-four cents. The limits on this project is Theodore Two Marlboro, that's the, for the phase one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Disario, for a resolution approving a construction agreement for inner circle phase one water main and roadway rehabilitation improvements buying between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and MJ Underground Incorporated LTD for an amount of two million three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand six-hundred-and-eighty dollars and sixty-four cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-three-four-six.
The last item under engineering for tonight is to approve a comment agreement and expenditures for the West Sewage Treatment Plant electrical upgrades. This should have been discussed, I believe, at the last workshop. Strand was there, provided some additional detail.
I just have one question. On page one-oh-seven, where it says delivery address, it says seventeen-oh-one Gaylord Road. However, the address for the rest of the documents is the sixteen-whatever Gaylord Road. Is that correct? Is it an error?
Well, I'll have to, I'll take a, wait, I'll take a look, and we can have that changed in the agreement before it gets signed. I'm not sure what the exact address is off the top of my head for the, for the West Station.
It's sixteen-something. Sixteen thirty-one.
Sixteen thirty-one.
Gaylord Road.
But is it sixteen thirty-one?
Sixteen thirty-one. And every other reference throughout this document says sixteen thirty-one. It's just on this particular page, it says seventeen-oh-one, and I was just wondering if it was...
I think we just make a motion to change it to match to all the other addresses.
Yeah, we just want to double-check to make sure that's where the generator equipment's going to be dropped off and then delivered.
That's why I'm asking.
So I don't know if it is actually getting delivered to that spot to get fueled up and then come over, or if it's, so we can find out if it needs to be changed, but I'm assuming that's, again, the company from Conley Electric out of Addison, that they're specifically saying that that is where they're delivering it. We can confirm the actual delivery address if it needs to be first to the equipment operator or if it needs to go to our site. I see where you see that on page one-oh-seven, I see that.
Do we have a motion?
A motion with the needed changes if necessary.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin with the changes, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for approval of the Commonwealth Addison agreements and expenditures for the West Sewage Treatment Plant electrical upgrade. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes. Tina Oberlin? Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And that's all I have, and I can entertain any questions council might have.
Any questions of city engineer? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our economic and community development, Dan Ritter is here this evening. Good evening, Dan.
Thanks, Mayor. One item is to approve an ordinance amending Title III of the city of Crest Hill, co-ordinances to adopt a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oliver, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, to approve an ordinance amending Title III of the city of Crest Hill, co-ordinances to adopt a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. This was discussed at last week's work session also. Any questions or comments?
No, I just want to commend you for doing this.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 2032.
Besides that, I just had this Thursday, we have another ribbon cutting for Conquer Boxing. It's located in CFX Fitness, and we're doing that in combination with the Joliet Chamber of Commerce. That's from 12 to 1 this Thursday. I don't know if I sent that out to everybody, if I did? Okay, good.
Yeah, I replied to you, you sent that a while back, and I told you we'll have IML this week.
Good. So, I'll be there for that, and I believe the mayor's gonna be there for that, and anybody else that can join us. We'd be glad to have you for that ribbon cutting. And then this Saturday, we actually have two of them. There's Window World is having their 15th anniversary from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And they're gonna have food, music, some of that stuff going on there. And then Mr. Auto Care is having a grand opening from 12 to 2 with food as well, and a ribbon cutting there. So, I'm keeping the mayor busy, I think, with ribbon cuttings and everybody. So, everybody's welcome to be at both of those, and welcome our new businesses. So, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions of community development? Alright, thanks, Dan. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I have two items on the agenda this evening. First item is a police services agreement with Siegel Cottonwood Farms. This is for their Pumpkin Fest for October 12th, 18th, and 19th, from noon to about 6:15. We've done these similar contracts with Siegels in the past. I have the contract and the insurance attached as well, and I'd be formally asking for that approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman DiSario, for the approval of a special events police service agreement with Siegel's Cottonwood Farm for October 12th, 18th, and 19th, 2025. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm surprised Tina didn't catch this one, but there's.
Uh-oh.
The address is wrong on their liability insurance form for the city.
Well, you know.
Gotcha.
Chief?
Thanks, Nate.
I've let the team down, Nate, I'm so sorry.
I have a couple of questions, the dates they have, they don't have anything going on like that Friday before the 18th, or any of those other dates, like the weekend before Halloween, like the 24th, 5th, and 6th, those weekends?
Not, not as of right now, and they deemed that they did not need our services for those days.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, if they come back to me, I will come back to city council, but those are the dates they requested.
I just hope that, you know, they don't have something big going on, and then people have to walk across whatever road. You know, that's my concern, you know.
I agree with you. Yeah, I don't know, it hasn't been as big as the old haunted house they've had, so. Maybe that's why they scaled it down and figured they could handle it, but we'll be keeping an eye on it.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angela DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The second item I have is another police services agreement with Caroline Lakes Homeowners Association, and that is for October 26th from 2 to 4. It's basically their trick-or-treat, and they want the officer, an officer there for that event. So, I'd be asking for a formal approval of that as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal, for the approval of a special events police service agreement with Caroline Lakes Homeowners Association for October 26th, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Angela DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, also I have to say is thanks to everybody who volunteered for the Neighbor's Night Out event we had on September 4th. Many of you that are here tonight volunteered your time and your hours to this event. I think it was a very successful event. I also want to thank Officer Outlaw, who put a lot of time and effort in this event, and did a nice job, so. I'm looking forward to next year's event. We're gonna have another meeting to sit down and kind of discuss and see what we can change or make better for next year. But, I wanted to thank everybody for their time.
Well, I just want to comment on what a wonderful job she, she did yet again on that. It's so much work putting that together, and she should certainly be applauded for her dedication, and it was such beautiful weather, and everybody that was there seemed to be having such a great time, so tell her what, five stars.
Will do, thank you. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, it was, yeah, it was another great crowd that we had there for Neighbor's Night Out. Heidi does a fantastic job, and I know all the police department helped her out. I'd also want to recognize the vendors that were there. Everybody took time out of their day, and, you know, a lot of the food that was given away was given away without any cost at the, at the vendor's cost. So, that was quite amazing with the food that they had, because it was a pretty good dinner that night. But again, thanks to everybody that showed up, the helicopters are always a big hit, you know, for the kids, but the whole thing was meant to be for the children, that, you know, they can build a relationship with the police officers, and that's what it's all about, so, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the mayor's report, we took care of the agenda item. The only thing is, we did have a grand opening at O'Reilly's on Larkin Avenue. That was last Saturday, Alderman Treasurer Jamie Malloy was there, Alderman Albert, Alderperson Overland, Alderman Dyke, were all there, did I miss anybody?
The clerk?
Yeah. Clerk Christine Verche Hall was there also. That was, actually, it was, they had a car show, they had, they had a lot of giveaways, they had a lot of games. It was a great time. That is the second O'Reilly's in the City of Crest Hill, the one on Plainfield Road is still open and operational. This one does have, you can buy everything that you buy at the other stores, so if you're on that side of town, it's closer. We are also one of the Midwest Distribution Centers for O'Reilly's now. They took us for a tour through the warehouse. It's there, they told us that there were 70,000 pieces of parts and equipment in that warehouse. So, they, they take care of Illinois, Wisconsin, Iowa, Indiana around us. So, they've been a great partner, a great business partner for us, so we wish them nothing but the best at that site. If you have not been in there, I suggest you go in, because from what it looked like from Big Lots, it is amazing the job that they, and the money that they put into that site, because it really does look attractive. So, good luck to them. Council would like to make any comments that were there?
Everyone was very, very nice there, and, yeah, they did take us inside, and it was pretty amazing. They said that that was one of three distribution centers, so it's quite a coup.
Yeah, I went through the tour and went through all the parts and everything, it was really something else. To see all the parts they have on hand, and everything else that they do there. It's hard to believe that was another store, you know, the number of stores it's been, you know? It's really amazing, all the different transformations that they have building, and different businesses have been there. But hopefully, this will be the last one we see there, and they stay there for quite a long time.
Yep. Okay. Any questions, I'll try to answer them. Moving on to our city clerk's report, Christine Verche Hall, good evening, Chris.
Good evening, thank you so much. Mr. Auto Care located at 2424 Plainfield Road is asking council's approval to purchase his last six additional permits. This will be for 60 consecutive days. He is getting a permanent sign, and by time this is up, he should have his permanent sign. Council, your approval.
Motion would be in order.
What kind of signs are they?
Just temporary, like a portable sign.
Those like feather ones?
I don't know what actually he has for his business, but they just put some, like, they could put electronic board sign, they could. I'm not sure what he has.
So, we're giving an approval for something that we don't know exactly what it is?
Well, they're, they're legal, they're legal within the city.
This is just a temporary, 10 days, 10 day signs. He's tucked back in the corner, it's hard to see him off of Plainfield Road, so I think they're just using for advertisement as they open up.
So, is it an electrical one?
Huh?
Is it an electrical one?
I'm not sure exactly which kind he has right now, that he's using for the last 30 days.
So, it'll be at the street?
Probably be close to the street. Do you know anything about it?
I know the majority of them are the waving flag banners out there, just from having gone to Urban Kitchen today. So, I think they're the feather flag, like the feather flags that are up. They might have a couple of smaller ones, too.
And when the permanent sign comes, if it doesn't meet our requirements for the sign ordinance, he'll have to go through plant commission and city council. So, this is just for the.
I think he's got a permanent sign up already, actually, he's just using these to.
I don't, I think it's on its way.
Oh, is it?
Last I heard, it's on its way, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of the six additional temporary sign permits for Mr. Auto Care 2424 Plainfield Road, number 500. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angela DiSario.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. And the only other thing I have is our Free Community Shred Event for City of Crest Hill and Lockport Township Government. It'll be Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It'll be held in the front parking lot of City Hall, and we ask for a limited of four boxes. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions of the clerk? Alright, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer's report, our treasurer, Jamie Malloy, good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have an approval for a list of bills issued through September 16th, 2025, in the amount of $1,016,129.50.
Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman DiSario, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angela DiSario.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And then to let you all know that I've got regular and overtime payroll from August 25th, 2025, through September 7th, 2025, in the amount of $286,528.96. And that's all for me.
Okay, any questions of city treasurer? Alright, thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Chris, what was the date on the shred?
October 25th.
And what was the time?
9 to 11, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to volunteer, please let me know, I know you're already on the list.
Okay, unfinished business, we have nothing, anyone? New business, anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City council comments?
I'll start, committee liaison, you go very fast. Just a quick update, we have a tree from the field, so we want to thank them for donating the Christmas tree. So, if you want to pass around, go ahead. That's all, and I'll give you the information, Blaine, it's in the car, I left it, about everything else.
Okay, city council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Begin with Alderman Dyke this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate my granddaughter. Her school, where she goes on Cole City, they have five different schools from pre-K all the way up to high school, and each school had to come up with a design for their fall festival. And her design got chosen for a button, and so there was five buttons, one from each school. So, I'm proud to say that she came up with the design for her school, and real proud of her, and they sold a bunch of buttons, in fact, I'm even wearing one tonight for. I've been telling, I've been wearing it to work when I go to work, and here I am, here at the city council with it, so congratulations to her.
Congratulations. You can't even draw a straight line like me.
Anyone want a button, I can.
Alderman DiSario?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Nothing.
Alderperson Overland?
Well, this coming week is my precious little baby's birthday, so I always have to wish him a happy birthday. He will be 35, and I'm only 45, I don't know how that happened.
Alderman Sepiti?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
I have no comment. Alderman Albert?
I too want to just thank Heidi and the police department for the great job they did for Neighbor's Night Out. Certainly kind of a cool night, but it turned out great with the food vendors and the regular vendors and all the volunteers, so. Hats off to the police department for a successful night, thank you.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing yet, Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, anyone like to address any council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn. Second. You were a little slow on that one, Angelo. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert for an adjournment. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angela DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, meeting is adjourned at 7:40 PM, thank you, good evening.